Hello, welcome to the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting of May 16, 2019. I'm Paul Winterstein, with me is Stacy Goodman and Lindsay Walsh, and our staff liaison, Sheldon Lynn. We have one item on the agenda this evening. It's -- it's called -- I don't even -- yeah, it's Agenda Bill 7793 Anti-Eye Craft Air Creek Culvert Streambed Rehabilitation Project. This has been referred to the committee from the full council after a bit of public interest and getting a little bit more airplay for this topic, and for us to then get a brief presentation, conversation, take questions and comments from the public if they're available. And it is expected that we will take action at the conclusion of this meeting. So I'm going to start off by passing it to Sheldon. And Sheldon, have you prepared or what have you prepared for us?
I've prepared a brief presentation of the Agenda Bill and a little bit of the background and so forth, so I guess I will just get started. Tonight, I'm going to talk about what the action is that's requested from the administration in the Agenda Bill. I'm going to talk about a little bit about the background to bring you guys up to speed a little bit and remind people what's happened in the past, and then follow up with the recommendation that's in the Agenda Bill. So the action requested is actually it's to award the construction contract for the purpose of restoring the stream bed inside the culvert to be compliant with the issued permits. This is the action that's requested of council is to award the construction contract. That's the subject of the Agenda Bill. From a perspective of a little bit of background, the budget, city commitment authority, the contract is for about $119,000. The reason why this Agenda Bill is in front of council is because it is above the limit that the mayor has an authority to sign the contract. This is a little different sitting down here doing the presentation versus up there, so I'm not quite with it. The project itself was a construction project that occurred in 2017 as authorized by the city council, and that project was to replace a culvert across Newport Way to address flooding and sediment issues coming over Newport Way during high flows. During the process, Department of Fisheries and the Corps of Engineers required the culvert to be passable for the fish in the stream. And so the design considerations that were done as part of that incorporated a box culvert with a significant amount of stream bed sediments contained in the culvert to help slow the Following the construction of it, there were permit conditions that are assessed or required of the permitee, the City of Issaquah, and that's to monitor and maintain the conditions that were built as part of the permit, i.e. large woody debris, the sediment and gravels in the culvert. They want to make sure that the stream habitat is held whole over time, and the requirement is to monitor and maintain that for 10 years. And so what that does is it provides the opportunity for adaptive management. I mentioned in the council meeting that -- excuse me -- that when we originally had proposed the design, we had some baffles that were incorporated in our original designs, and those baffles were not allowed to be constructed at the time by the permitting agencies. They're doing their best to try and create an environment that is the best for the fish and the ecosystem and so forth, and baffles are not the best thing to put in culverts because over time they can inhibit fish passage, so they try not to do that. So everybody's trying to do their best as partners to make sure that the project is designed and built the best way possible, but then again recognizing that during the actual monitoring of it, there may be things that you need to do to repair or adaptively manage and change the system to accommodate the environmental conditions because environmental So where we are right now is in 2018, Department of Fish and Wildlife and city staff were out at the site, and they noticed that the culvert gravels had just about completely There's a picture of the culvert after it was built. You can see the stream bed gravels, boulders, cobbles, things like that inside the culvert itself, and the whole purpose is to have a gravel bed in there that slows the velocities down and allows the fish to migrate without too much difficulty. After the 2018 winter season, i.e. January, February, March, this is what the culvert looked like. There's like nothing in there except for the really big rocks. And so as a responsible permitee, we're required to come in and restore those gravels in the bottom of the culvert specifically to, again, try and maintain velocities at a speed that are acceptable to fish for fish migration. We had an engineer's estimate for the project, and the bids came in substantively above that at about $119,000. Engineer's estimate is different than budget. We do have the budget in the professional services and our monitoring and maintenance for a number of mitigation sites. This is just one of them. So the only reason why we're in front of council is to have them award the contract because it's above the mayor's authority to execute without council authority. And so the recommendation to be compliant with the permit is to award the contract so that we can restore the gravels in the culvert. If there are questions, I'm happy to take them.
Good, Lindsay?
So Sheldon, talk to me about, because I haven't been on council for very long, the estimated bid range was $40,000 to $50,000, and the two bids came in, like you said, significantly above it, $119,000 and $192,000. Is there -- I guess I have a few questions around that. Is there ever a point where you guys go, wow, the bids that we got in are just way too high, we wouldn't ever accept that? Is there ever like an automatic amount? And does this seem -- I know you explained in the documentation that it comes in because these are smaller projects and the bidding situation was competitive with other projects out there, but does this seem abnormal, anything that we should be concerned about?
In this instance, I would say it's not abnormal. There is not a specific hard and true number that you just automatically reject bids if they come in above the engineer's estimate. We look at the bids and we evaluate the bidding climates. We evaluate, again, you know, what the intensity of work is, and in this case, it's not just the bidding climate of having higher prices from contractors and so forth, but this project is very labor-intensive. They're going to have to be hauling in by hand all those gravels. And it's a long culvert, they're going to have to unload trucks and then wheelbarrow them by hand, moving these large rocks in and gravels and placing it and anchoring in the rocks to create the baffles in there. So, you know, it may have been that, you know, one, we didn't anticipate the amount of intensity of the labor, but certainly we didn't anticipate the bidding climate in that instance, too. So in this case, I would say, no, it's a reasonable bid. The low one is, the high one was a bid on the high end. But there are times when we do recommend the council to reject the bids. Does that answer your question?
Can you explain what baffles are?
Okay, so baffles are -- they can come in a number of different forms. What we're trying to do is set up -- they're essentially anchored rocks of large size that go from one side of the culvert to the other perpendicular to flow. And so what it does is it helps prevent the migration of the smaller gravels and so forth from migrating through as a result of the higher flows. That's what baffles are. It's just it's another way to slow down the velocities and hold the material in place.
And so that wasn't allowed by Fish and Wildlife initially, but now, since they've seen the culvert in action, and now they're allowed baffles?
Yes. There is -- I spoke earlier of an adaptive management, and they do with partnership, you know, work with the agencies such as us to adaptively manage the environment because you can evaluate the system originally, but Mother Nature can throw some things at you that just are really large. And so they're allowing us to install the -- and baffles is a loose term here, but it's a ridge that goes across. And as I mentioned before, the agencies do their best to have the design be the best it can for the environment, and that includes the fish. And what happens and why they stay away from baffles is what it have -- the baffles create like a little hydraulic jump, which makes it even harder, the little miniature waterfalls that make it really hard for the fish migration. So they're just -- they initially don't want them in there to start with.
Okay. We've had a couple of emails from community members, so I'm going to ask some questions that are not -- ask some of the questions in these emails. So what's the -- one of the questions is about needing approval from the state and the tribes. Do we have approval -- it seems to me we have approval from the state.
We do.
And what about the tribes? What is their involvement?
In this instance, the tribe wants those gravels in there. So Fisheries is doing what was originally permitted. We're adaptively managing to make sure that they just stay in there, though. But the expectation from the tribe, the Corps of Engineers, and Department of Fish and Wildlife is that we are rehabilitating what washed out to meet the requirements of the original permit.
Okay, so we don't need an additional sort of approval from the --
No, we don't.
What -- was Rivers and Streams Board involved in the initial construction? And are they involved in this, and why or why not?
They were involved in the original design at the very beginning of it in 2015, and that was at a time when we had reports from two different consultants that said it was not fish-passable for the stream. And later during our design, the Fisheries folks, including the tribe, came out and they said, oh, no, this needs to be a fish-passable culvert. So the design modified a little bit, but not substantially from what Rivers and Streams saw.
Our Board, Rivers and Streams?
Yeah.
Okay. And so this doesn't need to go back to --
No, it doesn't. We're in the monitoring and maintenance phase of a project that's already been built.
Okay, is there anything unusual about this project, or is this how we typically manage the monitoring? And by that, I mean, my understanding is that it's not part of the original budget, but we -- for the construction project, but our budget, our city budget, keeps this type of monitoring in mind? Or tell me how we --
So the way we deal with that is that we do a number of projects that have requirements under the permitting for environmental monitoring and maintenance following the construction of a wetland as a mitigation site or other types of things. For instance, Southeast 62nd Street, that's going to have the same requirements. It's got about a 10-year monitoring and maintenance program for the relocation of the stream, the habitat logs we put in the main semi-Issaquah Creek, the wetlands that we're going to construct out of it.
Where's our budget for that monitoring?
What's going to -- where the budget is for that is is that it -- we take it and we put it in the operating fund of the stormwater fund. And so the stormwater fund is doing the monitoring and maintenance for our environmental mitigation sites.
So we have money set aside for these purposes?
We do, specifically.
We're not taking this out of the general funded?
That is very specific. It's in the water, in the stormwater utility, and it is budgeted.
Okay.
You're not taking it from the general fund.
Okay, one of the questions is about the process we started a couple of years ago to more involve the public earlier on in projects. How does this project fit in with that process?
Okay, so this is still at the tail end, at the end of, you know, it's really after construction of the first project. This is a monitoring and maintenance, which is a continuum of the previous capital project that was completed. It's in that inform stage, so the Agenda Bill is saying to the council and to the public that, hey, we need to get in there and do some repair work and maintenance work. And again, I'm going to reiterate, the reason why we're here is because of dollar value of the contract. Normally, what would have been is that the public would have received notice that we're getting ready to come out and do some work in the area for maintaining what we were supposed to do under the permit requirements.
Okay. One of the questions we had was about why the state isn't paying since they didn't let us do the baffles initially, and so explain why.
So we are the permitee. We're responsible for our project. We're the ones that caused the change in the stream. Yes, they didn't want us to put the baffles in originally, but again, it's a partnership, and we understand the goal is environmental restoration and fish passage, and so, you know, as the permitee, we take on those responsibilities regardless of how the permitting agency says yea or nay.
I -- that's all I have.
Some questions about the contract, because I don't think I've seen the terms of the contract, but what -- is there a performance component? I mean, is there -- so we have a 10-year monitoring and maintenance obligations and we're on this, and I know on many other projects around the city. When we bring someone in who's going to do this mitigation work, wheelbarrow rocks in there and all that, what -- are they obligated at all for performance? And other than you just look at it, it's done, and what about next year?
They are obligated to do the construction work. We are obligated for the performance, and that is incorporated within the design and the expectations that the design will perform for the Fisheries aspect of it. The culvert is designed large enough with all the gravels and so forth in it to pass the water so that we don't have a flooding issue on Newport Way, which was one of the primary goals of the project. The fish passage became an additional add from the environmental permitting agencies. The permits that were issued by the Corps of Engineers have very specific requirements for performance of the flows and things like that that we have to monitor over the 10-year period.
I guess what I was getting at is if, say, there's a similar event next year and there's the whatever gets installed semi-fails or what have you, just we -- is there no obligation on this whoever does this work?
That's correct. The contractor is not obligated. They're doing what they've been told to do by the City of Issaquah.
Well, unless they did something --
Unless it's a defect in workmanship or something like that. Workmanship in materials, yes, but you're putting gravels in there. I mean, now, if the anchoring of the baffle structure, if the structure fails as a result of a defect in their workmanship or something, then yes, we can go back to the contractor within a year, but it -- that's going to be a tough one to show, to be really candid.
Well, okay, you just answered my question. If there is some type of defect or underperformance, there is a period of time where if there's a failure, we could make an assessment, we could try to determine the cause of that failure, and it's possible that they could be required, but obligated to take care of that. Okay? And I don't have any other questions about the contract, but just a little bit more about the project. I remember the original one, I remember it was about flooding. I remember being a little bit surprised about it had to have fish passage requirements. There must be assumption that there's habitat upstream uphill?
There's very limited habitat upstream. That was one of the things that when we were designing the project, we were having strong conversations with the environmental agencies, and it's tough to change their minds.
Because it's one thing to control stream water and streams, and it's another thing to create habitat, to perhaps restore habitat. It's just unclear to me that as a -- it had a long-term legacy of actually being, having fish in it. I don't know. And what's your read?
I'm not a fish biologist. I've walked that entire stream a number of years ago, and you may have some little itty-bitty fish in there, but I don't think you're going to have any large fish, but you look at it from a different perspective.
Yeah, and I don't know all about -- so, okay, so did this fall within the scope of, I know statewide, a lot of culverts had been replaced. Now, this was not a -- was this part of that whole statewide program of replacing culverts? Or no, just because we were doing some rehab for flooding? Did it fall within the umbrella of that program where this was just came in?
That program is specifically for Wash Dot culverts. There was an adjudication, and the courts ruled that Wash Dot was responsible to do their culverts and named a number of specific ones that they had to do. In this instance, the tribes and the Corps of Engineers and so forth, when they see culvert replacements, they're looking for fish passage with it. And so if you want your permits, you have to pretty much provide the fish passage.
So it's not a state culvert, but it was being -- it was built kind of to specs for the same kind of purpose of all those other state ones? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Each culvert's unique.
So, yeah, they are. So for all those state ones, is DFW, is the Corps, are the tribes involved?
Absolutely.
All of them?
Absolutely, they are.
So these controlling agencies that were involved with the permitting, this wasn't the only culvert they've done?
No. A classic example was when they, when Wash Dot closed East Lake Swimming Parkway for almost a week, two years ago. That was a fish passage culvert, and the tribes, Corps of Engineers, and DFW were heavily involved in that.
Maybe some of the same people?
Yes.
So...
It's typically the same people from the tribe and from Fisheries.
Okay, and then compared to the original project, and you did provide some information in the Agenda Bill, and you mentioned a little bit earlier about how the, I mean, there was over 600 feet, I think, of stream bed restoration, and this is 137 or so feet across, right? So this is unlike the original project, which was very disruptive. I don't know if we had to close the road, but I think, I know it was down to a single lane when the culvert was being installed, if I remember that correctly.
Yeah, we had some pretty heavy traffic impacts when we did the culvert originally because we had to shift the traffic over.
Right.
I think we were able to keep two lanes open during the construction of it, but it was heavy construction activity, so it slowed the traffic down.
So for comparison's sake, what is going to be the impact to neighborhood roadway, non-motorized users of the roadway? What is this project going to do in comparison to that originally?
What they will probably see is some gravel trucks that will have to offload their material off the side of the road so that the workers can then hand-place and move the material underneath and inside the culvert. And so it'll be short-term durations for unloading, offloading that, and they may have some small equipment, too, that they offload, like a small Bobcat or something, so they can run a Bobcat in and maybe have less handwork.
Is there going to be any lane closure, or?
They may have some slight, small traffic control when the truck shows up to offload and then reload, you know, small equipment or something like that, but it's not going to be major. It's not like the first construction effort, no.
And the access to the culvert is going to be, I think you said this, it's going to be from the, what's the east or north side of the road through whose property?
That would be the Riva property.
Like exclusively through that property?
There may be some on the other side, on the large shoulder area where we have the, where the city owns the property by the storm detention pond. We may offload some things on that side as well to move material in from both sides of the culvert.
So you --
And we do have a little work on the south side of the culvert as well.
Or the west side, yeah, right.
Or whichever west side, yeah.
So the, so in terms of, again, impact is, you don't, there may be, how did you describe that? Some controls for when vehicles are coming and going? Is that what you -- is that it?
Not coming and going, but when they're coming in and they're going to offload materials or offload small equipment or something like that, or when they come in to pick up the small equipment and the like, there'll be some small, small traffic impacts related to that, just for safety perspective, but not major.
What, how many days expect this work to go on?
I'm going to look to my engineer, Matt Ellis, over there to tell me that.
It's about 20 days.
So it's about 20 working days, so that would be about four weeks of time.
What are the working hours? What will the working hours be?
Standard working hours are between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. That's our standard, Monday through Friday, that's our standard work hours.
And do you know how many trips, how many truck trips do you expect?
I don't.
Any guess?
I don't know. 137 feet of culvert. I don't know, I'm going to guess five to 10.
Like total?
Probably closer to the 10.
You mean for the, for the big trucks?
Yeah, for the big trucks.
That are bringing the raw material that's going to be placed in the culvert?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions about the contract. Remember, the action tonight, the question in front of us is whether or not to approve a word of the contract as requested to Iron Creek Construction LLC in the amount of $119,460, including sales tax. Thanks for that bit of detail. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have two. First one is, you know, the one of the goals of the project was for, to reduce flooding. So how has the project performed in that regard? And will this additional work have any impact on that?
The project has performed well in reducing the flooding in that we didn't get flooding as a result of the heavy flows that were coming out and the heavy sediment loads that the stream brings down. This is a steep ravine, and there's a heavy erosion that occurs upstream of the culvert, which brings a lot of sediment, sediment, and typically clogs culverts and actually in the past has gone on top of Newport Way. Again, the project was designed with the anticipation of having gravels inside the culvert. I would expect the flooding to still be addressed just fine.
And the other question I have is, what, we have an, what, I guess we have an option, or do we really, in reality, to not award the contract? We have a monitoring obligation and an adaptive?
You have an obligation for performance, and right now, it's in a condition where you're not meeting that obligation. So you're currently not compliant with the permit that was issued for the project.
Any reason this would be less expensive if we waited?
No.
Okay. I'm having a --
So we know that the previous project, we got washout and all of that, and that was found out through this monitoring check. When would be the next monitoring check after this is, this construction is completed?
We would probably be monitoring during the winter, just like we did the last time, but then we would also follow it up at the end of the winter season. Because I believe the picture that I showed earlier, this one was taken actually about December, January sometime, but then by the time we ended up with June site visit, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah.
So, you know, it really depends upon your rainfall events and how much water's rolling through the system, but we'll be periodically looking at it and seeing, okay, so what's changing?
Okay, and so when this came up to look at it in June or whatever that was, that was a, like a maintenance stop that, who was it that was required to come back in and check it?
We do that in engineering.
Okay, so it's something --
Our environmental staff, knowing that we have a budget for monitoring and maintenance, we would typically go out to a project that has mitigations like this or other, and we would assess the situation first so we can get an estimate of how much it would cost to do a full-scale monitoring evaluation. This one, it just jumped out at everybody or just right away. Here's your problem, you need to fix it, so.
So it wasn't somebody else coming in and saying, it's time to check this?
No.
Oh, look, you have a problem, you need to fix it. It was us being pro- It was us being proactive, if reactive--
Yeah, we were out there with fisheries. We had called a meeting out there with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so before I, we go to any type of deliberations or calling the question, I want to take this opportunity to offer any members of the public that are with us today, if you would like to take the opportunity to speak to the council, we'd love to hear from you. If you would, you guys know the drill, that either of you would like to offer comments. Mary, thank you. Please approach the microphone.
My name is Mary Lynch, and I recite it to 690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Isiqua, Washington. I want to thank you for being able to send you a letter and to have this come to committee. I guess my concerns still exist is, number one, that this project grew the first time from the design, over $500,000 to make it fish-passable. And that, my concern is still what I'm hearing tonight, is I still don't see that with this project, that it's going to make it fish-passable. So going forward, I just really question the amount of tax behaviors dollars that we spent on this, and we're going to spend another $100,000 to make it fish-passable, and is it really going to work? And also, part of the project justification was for, to reduce maintenance cost. Going forward, when we have projects like this, I think we really should, as a public, see what the ongoing maintenance cost and monitoring cost cost, because that should be considered as part of the project justification of capital. That's how you do it in the business world. And so to say, yeah, it's in the budget, we do it. Each line item, because the savings was because we weren't going to have the monitoring, the maintenance that we had, but it looks like we're going to going forward. I'd also like to talk about the construction. If any of you've been out there lately, like just this week, we had a large crane for Riva that totally blocked this area where they're going to now put the gravel. For the last two years, we've not really been able to access, or since Riva's been there, the trailhead safely from our development because of all the materials, all the trucks. Every time, we also now are going to be having our intersection redone this summer. It's being redone right now. We have the crews that park on Oak Crest, they park also over in the trailhead and block the trailhead. Every time a delivery truck comes in, they block our street, they block the trailhead, and we're getting more and more users to the trailhead. And we see very little acknowledgement from the city or the developer to keep our side, the south side of Oak Crest, available, not only for pedestrians, but for bicyclists. Today, I just went through there, and the flagger was trying to get me to hurry up as a bicyclist was going through in front of me, and as there was a pedestrian right there. And I'm going, I'm not going any further because a pedestrian and a bicycle are there. So the flaggers don't understand. And Riva, when they leave their workplace at night, we no longer have a safe walking spot on the north side, and that's only going to get worse as those houses get closer to completion. And the city is not monitoring that. So with this going on for another 20 days, we're going to have a lot of kids out of school, the construction's even going to get worse. So I'm not saying we don't need this, I'm just saying, look at the process for funding, for justification, and also, why didn't, when this happened last June, why wasn't we, the community, saying, hey, this project is coming up and be notified? To have to read it in the last minute before you go to construction, that's not what we were told when this project was presented originally. We said, they said that they were going to have a new program to notify the people of Public Works and keep us informed, and it's been taken off of the Newport Way corridor project. You can't even find anything in there. And so, the history, the project should stay there so the public can know what's going on, and anytime there's maintenance, we should know before it happens. I'm sorry. That's part of a good project management. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary. David?
Yeah.
Please approach the mic.
Good evening. David Kapler. We're going to potentially be rerouting another creek in the Isiqua area. Laughing Jacobs has been talked about. It's got a huge canyon, it moves real fast, at least for a while, just like the, quite a canyon here at Antiaircraft Creek as well. So if we do that, hopefully, we got some lessons learned here on Laughing Jacobs, and that one's more complicated because of the known habitat and use by the Koganese salmon that's more complicated than this one that way. But changing creeks around, and this goes way back before, her homes were built there, they wanted more ground for houses, so they moved the creek, straightened it out, so it just ended up being faster. And so, this is good. This reminds me a lot of last night. They had a great deal sponsored by Trout Unlimited, friends of Lake Samamish State Park, and the fish group over at the brew house talking about the removal of the dams and the elwa. And this is how the elwa, in terms of salmon habitat, when the dams were there, there wasn't any feeding of the gravel, and then they took out the dams and they over, more gravel, more mud, and more dirt at first, and now it's just really nice spawning grounds, and the salmon are definitely coming back in several different varieties. So hopefully, they'll get something that will stick in here and actually be habitat and allow upstream to be used. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, before we move on, anybody have any last questions for Sheldon? Anybody want to make, any comments? Okay, so the question before us is whether or not, let me pull up the question that's in the-- Actually-- Okay. So the question before us, and for our committee to consider, is whether or not to award the Antiaircraft Creek culvert stream bed rehabilitation project to Iron Creek Construction LLC in the amount of $119,416, including sales tax. And so, ours would be a recommendation back to full council, and so, who's in favor of the-- I don't think we have to make a motion. So this is the motion. Who's in favor?
Technically do. I mean, I, I'm in favor of it, and I do want to say that I, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with Mary's comments about needing to more, in a more, I'll say transparent way, because I don't, if we do budget for monitoring and maintenance of projects, and Sheldon has talked about how we do, in that we put money in a special fund, we don't talk about it when we, when we're approving projects, when we're deliberating on projects. And I do think we need to do that in a more deliberate way, and I don't, we don't solve that problem tonight, but I do agree with that. And concerns about how we don't see that this adaptive project is going to work, I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, I'm not an engineer. It's just, it's up to Public Works Engineering, and I think if it doesn't work, then there's going to be more explaining to do. Just not, not saying that critically, just it's going to be a larger question, and then hoping the comments from David are taken to heart about Laughing Jacobs Creek, which is more complicated. And so hopefully, you know, we have figured out, learned, if there are things to learn that we can apply to that later project, then how we do that. I have any other comments? I would support it. I don't think we have any choice. I mean, we have to, we have to do it. Just it is what it is.
And see?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's disappointing to have to spend another $119,000 on top of the 1.2 million on the original, and it's frustrating that that's on us. I think I really would like to see a total cost of ownership of projects and have that TCO metric incorporated into something that we're looking at so that we can go back and evaluate and see how much we're actually spending on things. And I also really hope that when we're in conversations with Samamish and some of the other areas about the Laughing Jacobs Creek, that we're taking this into account. But I think I would support moving this forward.
Okay, thank you. I want to build on those comments as well. It's clear to me, one of the things I've learned in, just on this issue, is that nothing like this happens, at least against this jurisdiction, on our own. I mean, we do not, this is not on our own at all, right? Sheldon, you explained how, when we did this, when we wanted to solve the flooding issue, it was the other agencies that put the burden upon us to make this a fish passage culvert. And so, you know, they have requirements, they have, and it was a condition of their permit that we do it that way. And just like you described about, when I asked the question earlier, I suspect the same agencies and a lot of the same people would be involved. Anything we do right here in the valley floor, on streams entering into any of the other major streams or directly into Lake Samamish itself. So I do recognize, I have a better idea through this process, that this is, we are just, we're part of a larger partnership. Everybody has certain obligations and duties in that regard. Department of Fish and Wildlife is just one, the Army Corps of Engineers is another, certain representatives in the tribes rightfully, you know, have their concerns, and they have a voice as well, in addition to us. I think all of these projects have those elements in this, and I think that's been informative. But until you actually, and it's not, it is my experience, too, the first time you do a project, especially when you're doing, and you're dealing with water in a stream, that you can't really predict ahead of time what the result is going to be. You have to go out and see afterwards. I mean, you design, there's a lot, and we know, there's a lot of different eyes on that design, and then something happens and you have to go look, and either it worked or you have to mitigate something that happened. So I think that this idea that we're going to know potentially ahead of time what, longer term, over a 10-year period of time, might cost us, it seems very difficult to predict one year to the next, but I do like the idea of just knowing when we do look at budget and say, here's the project, and here's what we have set aside, this monitoring and maintenance kitty, so to speak, and we know we have X number of projects. We don't know what the total cost is going to be till we get out there and assess them, but we do have a set aside for that. So I learned about that a little bit as well. But in terms of the question in front of us, I also am in, going to, am in favor of recommending approval back to the full council at the next available opportunity. I think that's unanimous. Sheldon, what else do you need from us?
Question is whether it's consent or regular business.
Okay, so, okay. Can I ask you about the date first?
May 20th. Your next council meeting.
Okay, okay. Do you have a strong feeling? Does anybody have a strong feeling about it's on consent or regular business? Yeah, I agree as well. Thank you. Okay, so I think, so we recommend, the committee is recommending unanimously to award the contract and to put it on consent for the upcoming regular council business meeting of May 20.
I just wanted to say that, you know, Mary listed off several concerns, ongoing concerns around construction on Newport Way. That is not the purview of this committee, nor is it on our agenda, but I would request, because I can't direct, request that maybe you alert somebody that could possibly watch the meeting and listen to Mary's comments. She listed up a number of things, and would ask that somebody who has the ability to gear out if there's anything that we should be doing to address those concerns.
I appreciate that. I took some notes as she was speaking about that very item.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Then the other item on the agenda is a review of projects that are in the packet, and I think Sheldon, as usual, what you've done, I assume, and I'm looking for your confirmation of this, if anything has changed, those are the ones that are highlighted in yellow. Do you have any type of, any specific ones you want to talk about? And I want to see if anybody has any questions about any of them as well. I do have one specific question.
I don't have any specific ones.
Highlight, okay. Does anybody have any questions about any of the projects? I do. Today's May 16. Guess what was supposed to happen yesterday?
Ah, yes, and I've been in contact with Washdaw--
Yes.
--and the bid opening was delayed.
Okay, we're talking about the I-90--
I-90 auxiliary lane project. I actually had an email exchange, as well as Matt confirmed it today as well, that they've delayed the bids because they had some last-minute questions from contractors, and so the bid opening is now scheduled for May 22nd, next Wednesday.
Okay, that was the, that was the only project I had a question about, so--
Excellent.
If there are no other questions, then that's our agenda for this evening. We are adjourned. Thank you, Sheldon. Thank you.